I'd like to call the community organization meeting to order when everyone rise. Applause.
To the like of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, we are a nation of honor, of individual, of diversity and of justice forever.
Mr. Kolbank is present. Mr. Mike Dunham here. Mr. Har here. Ms. Franks.
Here.
Ms. Boruski.
Here.
Ms. Kuppa.
Here.
Ms. Sweeney.
Here.
Ms. Paul Dunham. Here.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment, is there anyone here for public?
There's one.
Okay. Moving on to secretarial, adopt agenda is presented.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nomination elections of temporary president. I would like to both to declare the nominations of being accepted for temporary president.
I nominate Mrs. Jan Sweeney.
I'll second that. Or you'll need to say. The nominations do not need to be second for any office.
We need to close the nominations. All those in favor?
Motion made to second.
I need a motion please to close.
Seven minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Kolbank.
I'm voting.
Are you good?
All those in favor?
Was that a way?
All those in favor?
Yes, of Ms. Sweeney.
Aye. Being temporary president?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations.
Well now. Now, I would like to confirm the nominations being accepted for president.
I nominate Ryan Boruski.
I nominate Jan. Ms. Shaver. Ms. Sweeney.
Do we need a second one?
There'd be a motion to close nominations.
I need a motion to close.
Move who's opposed?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now if you wish, you want to do a roll call vote and each person should state whether they're voting for Mr. Boruski or Ms. Sweeney, be aware that extension doesn't count for anything. So it's a majority of those actually voting.
So we move with Ryan first?
It's, they do, you say who you are voting for since there were two nominees.
So that was your roll call by Kolbank?
Yeah, alphabetically, Mr. Kolbank, Ms. Shaver, Mr. Mike Dunham, Mrs. Sweeney. I mean, Mrs. Sweeney, I'm sorry. Mr. Har.
Ms. Sweeney.
Ms. Franks.
Mr. Boruski.
Mr. Boruski.
Naturally, I'll vote for myself.
Ms. Kuppa.
Ms. Boruski.
Ms. Sweeney.
Mrs. Sweeney.
And Mr. Paul Dunham. Ms. Sweeney. Hello, may I question?
Did she get to you?
Yes, she has already, Ms. Moser was sworn in prior to tonight's meeting.
Well, I didn't know.
She's not moving. Seven to two.
Six three.
Three. I'm sorry.
Okay, so now may I continue? We need to nomination election of vice president.
I nominate Ms. Franks.
I nominate Ryan Boruski.
We need a nomination to be closed.
So moved. Second.
Now we need a roll call?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Same process, roll call vote, say who you're voting for, again, be aware that extension doesn't count for anything, it's a majority of the voting. Mr. Kolbank's voting for Mrs. Franks. Mr. Mike Dunham.
Mrs. Franks.
Mr. Har.
Mr. Boruski.
Mrs. Franks.
Oh, Mrs. Franks.
Mrs. Moser.
Oh, Mrs. Sweeney.
Mr. Boruski.
Mrs. Franks.
Mrs. Kuppa.
Mrs. Franks.
Ms. Sweeney.
Oh, Mr. Sweeney.
Mr. Paul Dunham. That's right.
I think one of them can all split up.
Six. Six three. There, it might lose the current treasurer.
Mr. Mike Dunham.
Okay, so there's no need to do treasurer because that has, he is not taking another office. There is no need to do secretary because the secretary is not taking another office. So you move from item nine.
Okay, the scheduling of meetings. Currently, we need on the third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM in the D-First Elementary School. Work session proceeds Monday before meeting. We need to decide the date, time, and place. Would you like to keep it the same or?
I'd move that we keep the schedule of the meetings the same as they are now.
There a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The solicitor. Presently, we pay our solicitor, Andrew Zepf, $600 per month and $100 per hour.
Make a motion we do everything the same since they got it.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The FCCTI Joint Operating Committee, we need to appoint a three-year term connecting December 2018. Currently, that is Mr. Paul Dunham.
I make a motion that we renew Mr. Paul Dunham's tenure on board at the FCCTI.
I'll second if he's willing to do it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seximally signature plate approval.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Utility payment approval.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? PSBA Legislative Council, open to any board member. The present voting order for roll call votes is that the person making the motion shall be called first, the person seconding the motion shall be called second. Others, an alphabetical order except the president, he is called last. The president will serve from December 3rd, 2018 through the first week in December 2019.
So moved.
Wait a second, we haven't voted for the PSBA.
I'm just gonna go back for that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll finish this, just go ahead.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. No.
Wait, wait, name somebody.
We haven't named anybody yet.
I thought we heard him on.
Yes. Okay, let's go back to the PSBA Legislative Council. We need to open it to any board member. Is there anyone who would like to take that?
Who's it presently?
Okay.
Would you like to?
Will you do it again?
Yeah. Need a motion?
Make a motion. Ms. Boruski.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we need to do anything about the voting procedure?
I believe that's for information, but you wish to change it. I've changed it and that's why I said no because I always had the person that nominated first, the veteran second, and then I would not always go alphabetically. I would go different directions so the person voting first isn't always first, the person voting last is not always last. And that's a procedure I've been doing for the last three or four months. I like that. Are you making a motion to follow it that way then, Mr. Kolbank? I would like to make a motion for that.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, are we going on to the workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, this will start the December work session. Our voting principles, we do not have any voting reports, principals are not in attendance. I have athletic director, Mr. DuMont.
Just a couple things, like if you guys schedules for the upcoming season, we kick off this Friday, boys' basketball will be on Penn State Fayette, Friday and Saturday, the girls' basketball team will be at Southmoreland, both days as well, and the wrestling team will kick off at the Chargers use in meditation. That's pretty much all that I have right now. I'm getting ready to get into the swing of things and then I just need a couple minutes and executive session for some coaching.
Mr. DuMont was going to have the middle school girls here this evening for recognition for their accomplishment during the 2018 season, however, there was a conflict with band concert at North, so we moved that to January so all members of the team could be present for recognition. Okay? Maintenance, Mr.?
Oh, wait, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we now, there was discussion last month about the drug testing of new coaches, or were the coaches that were hired last month drug testing, are the drug testing all moving forward?
I didn't know where you guys stood with that, I wasn't.
So the ones last month were not drug tested?
Not in the world.
And moving forward, they're going today?
Yes, I believe with our discussion, if they were longer than a year and it wasn't concurrent, then they would be, have to submit to the drug testing before being hired.
Okay, so that's supposed to be effective with everybody hired this month?
That's. I believe so, yes.
I don't know who they are, but remember, they, it's an offer of employment and after you appoint them, they have to do it.
Yeah, I didn't know that there was a trial decision made about last month, but.
Well, they couldn't get hired unless they have probably entered their documentation with their clearances and that will be part of their clearances. Mike, Chris? Well, their clearances, if they're, once they're hired, they have to, you know, consent to the drug testing. That's part of the process. Correct. Unless it's somebody who worked already for the district coaching and they were hired for another sport and often they have to drug test every season or every time it occurs a continuation of their employment. But if there was a break in their employment, they didn't coach for a year, went somewhere else and came back, then they would be considered a new hire or rehired with a break in their service, they would have to do drug testing. Again, that was the way I understood we concluded in our discussion last month.
So who specifically is going to be monitoring that to make sure that these new hires are not drug tested?
If it's coaching with I'm like director, Mr. DuMont and I, along with Kathy Herstberger can just make sure that someone who requires that they submit to the drug testing will be.
What about others, like say teachers or students?
Same with anybody that's hired for our God's full district and employee of ours, that would be a pre-appointed condition that they have to do drug testing, whether it be a substitute teacher, a full-time teacher, what happened. Okay? Any other questions for Mr. DuMont?
We can probably add that to the packet that we pass out to new hires for precautions that's in there.
You have this way, make it central.
Pardon me, there it's central.
Hey, financial, Mrs. Sheets.
Just a couple things that are on the agenda. The asking mailing under financial C, that is for the cost of processing letters and applications to notify property owners of the March 1st deadline to apply for potential property tax relief. Under financial C, we need to appoint a representative and an alternate to attend the monthly Southwest Regional Tax Bureau Executive Committee meeting and the quarterly Bay County Tax Collection Committee meeting. Currently, I am the representative and Mr. Boruski is my alternate. The meetings are held at the South Gated Township University Building on the third Wednesday of the month at 11:00 AM. That changed since it first started, so it's actually falling on the day of our board meetings now. So a lot of times I have every intention of getting there, but something happens getting ready for the meeting and I don't make it. So if somebody else would want to be the representative, I would be happy to be the alternate. If you're interested in that.
And he said he still hit at 11:00.
They're at 11:00 in the morning on the third Wednesday of the month, so if you just stay at work.
Mr. Boruski.
Since you're the alternate, would you like to move up to?
Sure.
And the only other item, I just said, I passed out an updated capital projects scandal to include the item under capital projects under financial F to reflect purchase of security cameras. And that's all I have unless anybody has a question.
Can you just have a question in general about the various funds? For example, as the two middle schools and the high school, student activity funds, are those audited by our auditor?
Yes.
Okay. On an annual basis. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rohl, food service?
I'll stand up some way in the background. Now, I have a report I did include with your packet, was an article that was written in the newsletter for the Pittsburgh Food Bank. It's a publication goes out to the western part of the state, so I was very proud that I recognized the breakfast programs we started, they are elementary middle schools and our high schools. So if we're getting some recognition, we'll do recognition as a pack. We'll keep plugging away and getting ready for the next month. So that's all I have, unless you have something to comment.
Any questions for Mr. Rohl? Thanks Troy. Technology, Mr. Ollin.
Good evening, everyone. The only thing I have to mention is Denise already has is on the agenda to pay the bill for the security cameras. They have been ordered and were delivered today, so we'll be starting to work on the install on those.
Do we want to wait till they're installed so we make sure that they're working properly before we pay for them?
I don't think we've done that in the past. We probably certainly could, but typically electronics are pretty good with as far as dead on arrival, but I mean, that would, we could certainly do that, it's up to Denise.
Could we just add that here, you know, pending with their service or something to the, to the motion?
I just know in the past, we've purchased security cameras and then after event has taken place, we found out for various reasons, there was nothing on the camera because the camera wasn't working. I just want to make sure that since these are new cameras, that they're working the way they're supposed to be before we pay for them.
I need to man make a vote myself.
Chris, you can do it.
Yes.
Let me jump back up, my mistake. Maintenance, Mr. Cheslow?
Good evening, board. Hey, good news is our generator's coming back to North tomorrow, so we'll get it installed. Let testing has been conducted at all schools except the high school, we've got that into the testing lab and should be getting reports, so we should pile that. We're starting on the air walkthroughs. Yesterday, we actually started that and today, we've got the high school, D-First, Central Office, Smithville, and AL Wilson done. We're gonna start next week with the rest of the schools and tomorrow, we're gonna do the final walkthrough on the roofing projects and do the final punch list on that. Any questions of me, on the board?
Yeah, hey Bill, what that generator run us?
We don't have it until they get it completely installed yet because they got de-crained and everything and stuff. I did talk them down on the rental fee, they wanted to charge us $3,000 a month and I said, listen guys, it ain't running, it's just sitting there idle. So they did knock it in half for us on the rental fee.
Any other questions for Mr. Cheslow? Okay, special ed, Mrs. Brickvich.
We're going to be having a meeting with our representative on indicator 13, coming up very soon, I believe, this Friday, and then we'll have an idea where we stand with respect to that review. We're just busy in meetings right now, a lot of meetings taking place, trying to get a lot of the INPs worked out and meetings now before the holidays. Mrs. Dunham might have some things to add.
And Mrs. Dunn?
Just a reminder that we need to consider adding a career learning support position at Flava just to get through the remainder of this school year due to the ladies getting close to their workload amounts, the learning support teachers from now until, again, the end of the school year. I don't anticipate that being a full-time need at this time moving forward, but for now, temporary between now and the end of this year.
Have there been any new students brought into South since our last meeting and we talked?
South, I'm north south because Mrs. Brickvich is, I don't watch those case lines as closely as I do north, but she might be.
I believe there are a few students that may have entered the building since our last meeting, but off the top of my head, I can't recall if they were special education. I don't think they were, but if they are, but we haven't had a chance to hold the meeting yet, that would still be, you know, under review because we always end up doing, if they come into the state, we're always doing our review before we offer them an IP for our district.
Could you possibly have those numbers in January?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Brickvich or Mrs. Dunn? This is Bezak, elementary, federal, and curriculum.
I'd just like to report to the board that since our last meeting, the district code Y, one thing I was planning to do November 30, I did submit it. I was alarmed when they bounced back wanting to admit to you, there was some corrections that needed made. Those corrections were made right before Thanksgiving and I'm pleased to say that we did get notification on Monday, the following Thanksgiving that it was successfully through and we're good to go as far as the cost we have to plan. We are continuing still review our transition activities with the pre-kindergarten service providers and still looking at numbers. At this point, it was reported to me that we have a solid 58 already, but we can't just pay coming in kindergarten this year, so, and it's barrier, obviously, so they do know that they have 58 already coming, so that's it.
Any questions for Mrs. Bezak? The secondary and high school principal curriculum, Mr. Hudson?
We have that PCCD grant that's coming, that'll be in January, they're hoping to release the money in January or February. I will attend a conference tomorrow, that Safe to Say, which is Pennsylvania's initiative for every district to have four people in charge of hotline, for people to remain anonymous to call in for safety reasons. And last, the high school was one of 280 school districts to be targeted for improvement in learning support for their attendance, math, English, and progress. Myself and Mr. Peggy attended a meeting last week, I think 300 schools out of 500 were didn't make the cut, so that's Pennsylvania's way of their new ESSA plan. Student success succeeds, we'll see how that goes. So we have to make improvements for four years at the high school for learning support, attendance, math, English, and they need to grow.
Any questions for Mr. Hudson? Transportation, Mr. Park?
Good evening, everyone. I did run through the numbers for the winter sports season and our district van should save us north of $5,800 this year, so keep that in mind for the spring, that they are continuing to save us massive amounts of money. Secondly, after our meeting last month, we had three serious bus accidents. Luckily, there was only one student who was taken away by ambulance, but thankfully they were on a bus, it could have been much, much worse. I think, Mr. Peggy, you were gonna speak on this?
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity this time to recognize and thank the fire department, the EMS, the EMTs on the scene of the accident. We had 39 students on a bus when I showed up, but this, you know, children were obviously upset from being involved in the accident. Administrators and those that assisted throughout the ordeal, I'd like to personally thank Mrs. Bezak, Mrs. Dunham, Mrs. Baker, Mrs. Shiroki, Kim Riley, Stacy P. Conen, Vic and Leandro Vera, Sherry Arndt, Bill Park, Terry Simon, Mark Dunham, who was not a teacher in that area, but he was one of the EMTs that showed up voluntarily, and Kathy Herstberger, you know, it was, we stayed involved into the evening, making sure everything, and parents were contacted, and everybody went above and beyond, you know, call of duty in a crisis situation, so I can't thank everyone enough for the cost to that bus accident. And thank goodness, as Mr. Park said, that it was, that there weren't any serious injuries. So the situation was bad, it could have been much worse, and once again, thank you to everybody that jumped in to help in that crisis situation. Also like to thank the bus driver, the action she took, you know, it was 100% unavoidable on her part, but she did everything she could to minimize the impact of the collision, to get off the burn of the road, to avoid getting hit from the oncoming car that lost control of this kind of hyperplane on 857 there. So her actions during that accident, as well as her attention, immediate attention to call for help and to get out of the bus or throughout the bus, to check on every student to make sure that they were not injured. So watching the video, I believe STA is gonna be using that bus driver's reactions to that circumstance as a training for other bus drivers throughout the company. So thanks again to the bus drivers for all the help. Any questions for Mr. Park?
Mr. Park, would I like to have the fuel cost from last year and this year compared on the buses for next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Park, I know that beginning of the school year, there was problems getting all the new buses online. For our next meeting, can you give us an update on the age of the buses that are presently in service?
Sure, we'll make that.
Thank you.
I can't at this point, all the new buses have arrived or are still waiting for the state police to come and inspect some of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, security, school safety, Chief Malek.
I have nothing at this time, I just, you know, do exactly.
Okay, other administrator, I believe, Mr. Boruski, you had a brief demonstration at Parkmont?
Thank you all for coming, it's nice to see this really cool people.
Is this a body? I think we can.
Yeah, we've, um, for years, we've had students that have gone to the farm show that, um, they can attend and they would be excused absences, um, for that, we could look at, if it's considered a field trip, so it wouldn't be marked as an absence, it would be considered a field trip, that's something maybe we can look at doing, but we have had students that have gone in the past that, um, it was, um, more or less approved, um, leave, we have students that leave for approved family travel and things of that nature. And, and, and we want Mr. Bruski was required to do with absences, students that have less than 10 absences can get those, that approval, they would be excused absences to attend events like that or family travel, um, as long as their number of absences didn't exceed 10 absences in the school year.
I'm thinking on policy, we allow a lot of things for educational purposes.
Ryan, do you know how many students in our district, like, have, have shown, uh, their, their angles with their?